I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 MEA, the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all in attendance and those who are watching online. At this time, I'd like to welcome forward Dr. Matt Richardson from our Denton County Public Health Department, and he is going to lead us in our invocation and in our pledges will be led by Eric Gildersley from our county administration. If you'll please stand where my right at, please turn off your cell phones. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm going to begin our prayer this morning with a Psalm that I memorized, as did you, no doubt, and I'm going to read it in the King James Version, because it'll sound a little more familiar to the ear. Let's bow. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me lie down in green pastures; he leadeth me beside the still waters; he restoreth my soul. He leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me; thou ride and thy staff they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies, and thou anointest my head with oil my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all of the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Father, we pray these things to you in gratitude this morning. We echo these words said ancient days ago. Father, we echo these because they ring true for us. We come to you in gratitude for the rain. We ask for peace and comfort for any damage that the storms brought with them. Father, we know that many times your blessings come hidden in chaos. And, Father, we ask this morning for peace and mercy and patience, and we ask that we can reflect that as your son taught us to. Father, I ask for health, and I ask for protection and security for those in harm's way. And, Father, we just thank you this morning, most of all, for the example of your son and his sacrifice and what it means for us. And it's in Jesus Christ's name we pray this morning. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And to Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Richardson, for your prayer. That was confirmation of the devotion my mother sent me this morning about six o'clock in the morning, so thank you. All right, we have several guests with us today, and we're glad to have you all with us. If you do wish to speak during our public comment forms, I do want to remind you that the time limit is three minutes. We are honoring that time limit, which is part of our Denton County Commissioners' Court operating procedures. And so if you do want to fill out a public comment form, please be sure to see Teresa, our aide to the court over here. She's standing up. Teresa, you can wave at everybody. So please turn in your form to Teresa. I think that's, and we'll be happy to acknowledge you and allow you to speak. I do want to mention a couple of things. Our hearts are going out to the people across the county this morning that are dealing without power. We had a power outage in the wee hours of this morning. We have about sixty, just to give the public an update, we have about 62,000 people without power across Denton County, and DME is about three hours to return to power. We have a couple of 18-wheeler accidents, and we also have an accident over on 35W and 1171 that our Denton County Emergency Services District is responding to as we speak. We had a warehouse collapse this morning in Lewisville. Northwest ISD is on a two-hour delay, and Argyle ISD has a couple of facilities that are out. Our Sandy Jacobs Denton County Government Building in Carrollton is without power this morning, so we have closed that building. It will open later today, and we'll be posting it on social media and our Denton County website, so people can have that, so people can have that notification. And because there is important county business that is going on at Sandy Jacobs Government Center today, but we do want to let the public know that it is closed, and we do have offices online and other facilities across the county. And so if you need to conduct county business this morning, you can go to Lewisville or Crossroads or the Flower Mound office, or come up here to Denton as well. Before we get to our public comment forms, I thought I'd like to take a moment to make a couple of comments as chair of this esteemed body. And I want to discuss the lies online that have been spread about me and Denton County, and I want you to hear from me that these statements are false and untrue. Solutions of North Texas has launched a smear campaign against me and the Denton County Commissioners' Court in a desperate last-ditch attempt to fund their nonprofit organization. And this baffles me, because Denton County has been such a great partner to them over the many years. In this process, they are smearing not only me, but also Denton County, a county my family has called home for five generations. Denton County has supported Solutions of North Texas with over $1 million since I took office. This was for services provided to our courts, community corrections, and other programs. The Commissioners' Court also gave them two Denton County CARES grants totaling $82,799.92 in personal protection equipment during the pandemic to continue providing their services. Let me continue setting the record straight. In December, I had a productive conversation with the Director of Financial Operations and Development with Solutions of North Texas. I also invited our county grant manager to join us on the call, so she too could help identify some other potential funding sources in addition to the county. At no time was there any name-calling or disparaging remarks. Any claim otherwise is just plain wrong. On the same call, we talked about the brand-new request to receive funds from the opioid settlement money. We shared with them that Denton County is still in the process of establishing a work group of practitioners, advocates, and nonprofits to establish recommendations to Commissioners' Court for a comprehensive approach. Let's be clear, no Denton County funding has been cut or pulled from Solutions of North Texas. Let me repeat, no county funding has been cut or pulled from Solutions of North Texas. To clarify other misinformation, it has been claimed that Denton County received over $1 million in opioid settlement funds. I wish we had, but to date, we have only received $424,602.68. The good news is that we have earned over $25,000 in interest earnings, which can be used to help even more people. Other nonprofits have requested funds distributed to Denton County, and it is clear these funds will not adequately cover the needs of all our nonprofits and other entities serving our residents struggling with addiction and recovery. Pardon me. We recognize that grant funding opportunities have diminished, and Denton County is navigating these very same challenges. However, it is not the sole responsibility of taxpayers to fund nonprofit organizations. In these difficult times, it is essential to explore all options rather than placing blame on any single entity. Denton County is not the only governmental source of these funds. The cities within our county and the state receive substantially more funding. My whole adult life, since before I was ever in office, I have personally volunteered, supported, and promoted many nonprofits, including Winning the Fight, Communities and Schools, United Way of Denton County, and many more, to make our county a better place for everyone. I believe wholeheartedly in the mission to treat substance use and advocate for their clients, their families, and for those who still suffer in the entire recovery community. I personally attended many drug court graduations to celebrate and congratulate the graduates, and have been inspired and blessed to see them taking their next steps in sobriety. With the many stakeholders working together, we can lay the foundation for both comprehensive prevention and recovery to ensure the sustainability of available programs. It has been falsely claimed online that I changed my email address, and believe me, I have not. I have already heard from many of you, look forward to hearing from many more. In closing, these false accusations are sadly a distraction from the important job of serving our residents on their road to recovery. So I would like to make those comments and thank you all for your indulgence. And at this time, I would like to go to our registered speakers today, and we have about a dozen or so. And our first registered speaker this morning is Ms. Kathy Travis, and I will go ahead and set the alarm when people start speaking. Good morning, Ms. Travis. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Kathy Travis, and I am President of the Board of Winning the Fight. I live at 2605 Russwood Drive in Flower Mound, Texas. As you know, we lost our founder and CEO of Winning the Fight, Kathy O'Keefe, at the end of last year due to complications of cancer. My journey with drugs and addiction started 13 years ago, when my daughter was 17. Kathy O'Keefe and Winning the Fight helped me through this battle. Jessica was a beautiful daughter. She was smart. She was top of her class. She graduated from Marcus High School, but she was an addict. And she died of an accidental drug overdose, and the drugs she took were laced with fentanyl. She did not want to die, but she died on January 29th, 2021. Kathy and I began asking our communities like Highland Village and Flower Mound and Denton County about the opioid money. We began asking about a year and a half ago, because we wanted to know what amount of money was received, how it would be spent, because we knew there was a big picture. We knew it couldn't go to just one group, one person, or one avenue for addiction. Time passed, and I continued to ask, because everyone that knows me knows I don't give up on anything. I believe I was the first to ask the county about this money. We knew this was not to be wasted. It was not meant to help just one avenue. If you only look at one path, then there will never be a way to save lives. We educate, we work on mental health, we work on treatment, we work with families, police, courts, and others. Kathy and I volunteered to put together a task force to have a discussion, but unfortunately Kathy got sick and passed away, so that got put on hold. But based on other task forces that I have been on, including the town of Flower Mound, this is what we need to do. We need to bring in other entities and talk about the money that was given to the county. Talk about the best way to use it, and not talk about giving it to one organization. I don't want it all for Winning the Fight. We educate, we help families, we help so many families throughout Denton County and other counties. But I want everyone to help, because every time I stand up here and in a school and talk to families, I tell people, I'm here to save a life. And that's what I'm doing today. I'm here to save a life. So there's talk on the streets that Judge Eads has spoken bad about addicts. I'm going to stand here and say that I don't believe this is true. He has supported Winning the Fight.
Kathy, your time is up, and I'll let you finish your thought real quickly.
...in this call without hesitation. He has always supported me, my family, and Winning the Fight, and I believe that this was not true. So Judge Eads, Commissioners, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you for being here. It was an honor for us to get to conduct and speak at Kathy's, O'Keefe's funeral in January. Our next speaker is Mr. Gary Henderson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Gary Henderson, Jefferson Trail, Denton, Texas. This time yesterday, I was speaking to kindergartners at Borman Elementary. This is much, much less scary.
Good.
You know, whenever in the nonprofit sector we're faced with reduced services or even the elimination of services, we're concerned, because we know we're working and living in a fast-growth county, and the needs around us continue to grow. I know it doesn't look this way with the beautiful, flowing brown hair, but I've been a nonprofit CEO now for 22 years.
Yes, you have.
And I can say that in all of those 22 years, the last four years by far, during the pandemic, following the pandemic, have been the most challenging for our Denton County nonprofits, for their boards, their staff, and the financial decisions they've been forced to make. But it was during those same four years that we saw the best of Denton County. We saw Denton County mobilize to partner with our nonprofits in ways unprecedented. Those who sat in those seats you're sitting in before you, no disrespect to them, but when you had the opportunity with U.S. Treasury Department funding, you were so shrewd, you were so wise, you were so thoughtful. You're impacting lives, going into the future in ways that frankly, most of the community will never know because of the way you go about doing your work so humbly. This is a hard situation. It really, really is. But I can say, having worked in close partnership with Denton County, this court, Judge Eads, that over these past four years, your words, even more importantly, your actions, food insecurity, just the way you have found opportunities for the county to invest in, the plethora of needs that exist across the county. We know your heart. We know your passion for improving lives in Denton County. And we want to be at the table with you to make the very most of every dollar that finds its way, private or public, into Denton County to help the most people. And we know, Judge Eads, you're a partner, Commissioners, you're a partner, Denton County employees watching and listening, we know we can count on you as a partner as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Gary. Next is Ms. Pam Gutierrez from Denton County MHMR.
Good morning, Judge Eads and Commissioners. I'm Pam Gutierrez, Executive Director of Denton County MHMR Center. I reside at 10786 FM 2153 Sanger, Texas, 76266. I'm here to speak about my relationship with Judge Eads and the Commissioners. The Commissioners' Court and Judge Eads have provided support to Denton County MHMR Center for over a decade. The assistance has allowed our center to provide services for mental health, including crisis services, substance use services, and services for individuals with developmental disabilities. This is a passion of Judge Eads and this court. I have seen this personally. The center is proud of the court's investment in mental health, in substance use. The individuals served by Denton County MHMR Center are our most vulnerable citizens. The individuals served by Denton County MHMR Center are our most vulnerable citizens of Denton County. Judge Eads and the court has always been invested in assisting in the provision of mental health and substance use services. I am very, very grateful to have a county judge and these commissioners that believe in reducing the stigma and supporting mental health and substance use. There are many, many evenings and weekends that I've received calls personally from Judge Eads and county commissioners where they have been in the community with citizens, and they've reached out to me for help. And this has been for substance use and for mental health. And then our center has immediately gotten crisis services, substance use services, whatever the need is. And I thank you for that because it's our honor and our blessing to provide those services.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. You're a great partner. Next is Kimberly Greener. Was it Greener? Gruner? Hope I got that right. I apologize. Good morning, Kimberly. I got Kimberly right. Okay. Kimberly, welcome. Thank you. Speak right to that microphone. Three minutes, please, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm here to speak on behalf of Solutions of North Texas. I am a recovering alcoholic addict, to be specific, heroin and meth. For decades, I was an addict. I was in and out of jails, rehabs. Solutions came into my life. They offered me a lot of different avenues, like counseling. They came and saw me while I was in jail, which nobody else really did. Counseling, IOP, just a lot of different avenues, you know, showed me how to live like a productive... I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
It's okay. It's just us.
A productive citizen. Now I am currently HR, human resources, medical records, so I help get people in the community jobs.
Great.
Also, I take care of the elderly. I make sure doctor's signatures are on the papers. So I am a productive citizen, and I just hope we can find a resolution here.
Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations on sobriety. Yes, let's give her a hand. Congratulations. He's going to be under three B.
Sorry.
It's okay. That's right.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Scott, and I am the founder of Solutions of North Texas. For the past 20 years, I love my county. I have dedicated faithfully my services to our county for the last 20 years. This past year, I gave away over $487,000 worth of treatment because if I didn't, there was nobody else to do it. Those people would not be alive today. They would not be with us. It's all we've ever wanted to do is provide services. We're a sole provider for many of our courts and our probation department for this city because that's a difficult situation for most people to take care of, and that's something that we've been doing for some time. You mentioned how much money has been paid out over 17 years, and that is correct. Over the last five years, our... The amount of people that we have served have gone from 200 to almost 500 people each year, and people are dying every day from fentanyl being mixed into everything. So our part in giving funds away have gone from about $130,000 to over 487 this past year or so. My only comment is I love our county, and we're going to be gone here pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Good morning, Ms. Riley.
Good morning, Judge Eads. Morning, guys. Hi, everybody. I'm Casey Riley. I'm the Director of Financial Operations and Development and Solutions. I want to share a quick story of how recovery has affected my life. I grew up in alcoholism and drug addiction and violence. I did not have my first experience with recovery until I was 12, and my mom met my dad, who y'all just heard from. That changed our lives completely, and the recovery that he brought into our lives trickled down to not only my mother, who got into recovery when I was 16, but also me, who got into recovery when I was 30. Without recovery, I would be dead. I don't want to speak for my mom, but I would be. He had only been sober for a few years when he decided to dedicate his whole life to helping others get sober, to stopping them from dying in our streets and in houses that were given to them without any accountability on their part, and in hospitals, and the people who cannot get services at for-profit treatment centers because they can't afford it. I don't know about you, but I cannot afford $5,000 a day for treatment services, and we provide it at little to no cost to your people. I have no interest in carrying on the dishonesty that's happening in the court. I was the one on that phone call, and I don't feel the need to prove myself because I am a recovered person. I live a principled life, relying on a higher power, where I do all of my behavior out of honesty, out of integrity, out of open-mindedness, and out of willingness. We have tried to work with y'all, okay? I've sat down with multiple of you, and we would like you to join us in this mission. We would like y'all to join us in continuing to serve the county. All we're trying to do is serve you. So we are grateful if the conversation could continue, but to put it into a stalemate and just shrug when these lifesaving services are going away and no one else can pick up the slack, it's not appropriate. So we are just here to continue the conversation. We are here to show you how beautiful recovery can be, how it trickles down into everyone's lives, just like addiction affects most people's lives. A principled, higher-power-reliant life also trickles. So we just want to continue this trickle effect in your community. We're very grateful that you're giving us time to speak today. I mean, it's a part of it, but we're very grateful that you're hearing from us today. But let's move to a place where we can be productive, where we can actually serve our community, where we can put the funds where they belong.
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Judge, do you mind if I say something?
Go right ahead.
And this is not a response to anything, but I just want to make a couple of things clear myself because I have met with your organization. I have over 25 years of non-paid law enforcement, so I've given back to my community immensely, put my life on the line. I dealt specialized in drug enforcement, and I've dealt with multiple people that have drug and alcohol abuse and needed treatment, and I don't disagree. There's not enough treatment options within our county, and we have heavily been working on that for, since I've been here. And it's not just me. That's the decision of this court. Unfortunately, this is not the private sector. Things don't happen near as quickly as they do from where I came from in business. It's a totally different makeup. There's bureaucracy that is full of it. Whether we want it or not, it doesn't matter. We are trying to fast-track things we can, and this isn't the only objective we have. You know, we have over a million citizens. We're responsible for your tax dollars and how we spend those, and we want to make sure we do things appropriately. For someone to say that anybody, and I will direct to this, shrugged their shoulders, I absolutely did not. I met with you, along with my cohort, and listened and have the heartfelt of what you guys do. I absolutely could not do what you did. It is a very difficult endeavor, okay? I'm the one that usually took people to jail or tried to find an alternative place to take them, and a lot of times, your organization's the ones that ends up with them, and you guys have a very, very difficult job. And unfortunately, you know, the percentage of rehab or relapse is extremely high. So you have what we call frequent flyers that continue coming through your program, and I understand it's very expensive. But we're not the only entity. The federal government needs to step up. The state needs to step up. You know, it's their people as well, and those are where the funds can come. I'm sorry. Well, in the cities, for sure. You know, donations, it's hard. People don't have extra money to give out right now. Life has been difficult. So I think it's imperative that you realize, from my perspective, that, you know, I'm here to do the best job I can for the citizens, to use the tax dollars that we receive to the best of our ability, and that is my stance and my direction and my goal, and I feel the same way. I feel that that is exactly what my coworkers feel up here as well. But it is a little bit disheartening when I know what I've given back to the citizens, and it's not... I really don't like to stand up here and talk about it. I do it because that's what I choose to do, and God has led me in the right way and has done everything he can to make me a productive individual in society, and I only appreciate what you guys do. But I would appreciate it better if we were sitting behind closed doors, having meetings, and getting us taken care of than slinging mud like that we're not trying to do the best job we can up here. So that's the only thing I have to say. Again, I absolutely respect each and every one of you for what you've gone through and how tough your life has been, and I applaud you for coming through to the light on the other end and being a productive citizen, and I just hope that we can do something more positive with this going forward. So thank you, Judge.
I concur. All right, let's go to Cassidy Goin.
Good morning, Cassidy. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Three minutes, please, ma'am.
Yes.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir. I want to start off, I am a third-generation Denton County resident. I am proud. My entire family started here. I was born at Flow Memorial Hospital, and unfortunately, I had to watch them tear it down. Also, unfortunately, my family, addiction runs in my family. I broke a third-generation curse. I got sober. You may or may not have arrested me a time or three. I was a frequent flyer in the Denton County jail. I was in active addiction for over 18 years. I did not serve my county, my city, or my family, or myself, or anybody for a very long time. 2018, I actually entered into the CREW program that MHMR has, and through them, I found Solutions. I had no money. I had been out of contact with my family for a very long time because of my addictions and my decisions and my inability to get better on my own. Solutions gave me a scholarship. They gave me a chance when there was no other option for me. Fast forward, I work for Solutions now, and I have seen so many people that I have known my entire life for a long time, people that I was in jail with, went to school with, knew through family, friends, come through this program, and it has changed their lives. They too, like me today, pay their taxes. They are productive members of society. They have purpose. They have God-driven lives, and they are people that are proud to be a part of this county, a part of this city, and a part of the state of Texas, because we're all really proud Texans. But I've also lost people. I lost my cousin to a fentanyl overdose. I lost my best friend to a fentanyl overdose. I have seen the tragedy and how that trickles down through families and devastates them, but I've also been around to see the miracles. We need more affordable treatment in Denton County. Our county needs this. The fentanyl epidemic is insane. We need to help these people because it does trickle. It causes overcrowding in the jail. It causes so many problems for our county, and if we had more affordable treatment options, we could better serve this county, and people would be better for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations on your road to recovery.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Three minutes.
I am Lori Salmons. Three years ago, I knew no other way to live or how to deal with life without using. I saw no way out. That was until I found and heard about Solutions. Walking into Solutions for the first time in my life was when I felt like I actually had hope, I could get out of the darkness that I had been in for 20 years. They taught me how to grow up, be a human being, and to see myself as worth it. They gave me a new family, and they helped me with healing not only myself, but my family. I walked into Solutions on probation, looking like I was never getting off or ending up in jail, with my second CPS case against me, not knowing who I was and someone just waiting to die. When I completed Solutions, I walked out with probation completed, CPS case closed, seeing the person I wanted to actually be wanting to live for the first time in my life. Even though I completed the Solution program, they are still in my life today. They are my family. I always want to show the new clients that come in and the people I meet that this program really does work. Life is hard, and yes, I have been knocked down a few times since completing Solutions, but because of what I've learned there, I have been able to get back up and keep pushing forward and not give up. Today, I am able to be the mother my son deserves. I am someone people can look to for hope when they're starting on this path. I am an employee that my owner can count on. I am a daughter my parents can be proud of. I am a friend that can help make you smile. Today, because of Solutions, I am a human being, and I am alive. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right.
Good morning. Good morning. Hi, my name is Deb Armentor. I live at 2003 Mistywood Lane in Denton. I'm wearing this rain hat because I was prepared to stand outside and get wet, and I'm keeping it on because I don't know what my hair looks like underneath it, but y'all don't want to see, trust me.
That's okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you to everybody who has spoken, your moving testimony, and thanks to all of you, the Commissioners Court, and for your service. I'm here to speak just for myself, but on behalf of Solutions of North Texas, which does such amazing work for our community. I'm wearing a Disability Inclusion Society of Denton, Texas shirt to just uplift the fact that, as you know, people in recovery are a protected class with disabilities. Not any addict is protected, but if you are in recovery, you are. I know you already know this, but I just wanted to explain.
Thank you.
As you know, Solutions provides so much more than addiction treatment. They provide all of the wraparound services that need to come with that in order for recovery to really happen. As you know, they provide affordable housing. As you know, they provide jobs. And as you know, they provide counseling and support in the form of peer advocacy, and that's why you've been hearing from so many people who are speaking not only as recovered addicts, but also as Solutions employees, and that's such an important part of why they're so effective. I wanted to speak about the opioid settlement funds. So I happen to be a former Denton City Council member, and I know that when the Denton City Council received their share of the opioid settlement funds, they very promptly turned around it to give that to city EMS services to provide Narcan throughout the city. I know that the county is much bigger than the city, so to some extent, it's apples and oranges, but I just mention that just to urge that you all act as quickly as possible and also to make sure that you understand that, you know, Solutions is not asking for all of the funds. Maybe you've got some emails where people are, people who are passionate advocates, but Solutions themselves is not asking for that. They want some of the funds. They want enough to be able to continue. They want enough to be able to continue, and they understand very much that they're just a part of this bigger picture. Finally, I just want to say, as a former public official, oh, can I just wrap it up real quick?
Yeah, go ahead and finish your part.
Yeah, just, thank you. Just to say, I've been in y'all's position. I've received emails before as an elected representative from people who are very, very angry and very, very hurt. And I don't pretend to be perfect, but I'm definitely not. But every time when I would read those emails, I would tell myself, my feelings don't matter. My feelings don't matter. All that matters is serving the public good. And so I know you know this already, just reminding y'all how important that is. Thank you.
True, it's important. Thank you. I've seen you, Deb, over there at the graduations. So when I've attended, so I know that is important to you. Landon Dickinson. Dickinson. Then next will be Mr. Bob Williams. They both have registered. Go right ahead.
We'll make it easy on you and do it together.
Oh, okay. A duet.
Yes, sir.
All right. Go right ahead.
I just want to start by saying that I personally 100% agree that we have a desperate need for mental health and especially substance use services in this county, as we all are very much aware. We are providing services to the same groups of people. And so we are very much aware of the desperate need and the extensive need. That being said, I've known Judge Eads for a number of years at this point and seen him speak publicly as well as privately with me as an individual. And I have zero confidence that those words were ones that you would say.
Thank you.
That's not your heart, and that's not just, that's not how you talk. So I know that's not how you would say things. And I just want you to know that we stand with the Commissioners, all Commissioners here, and Judge Eads, as y'all have been huge supporters of us and of the individuals that we serve in this community.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob?
Well, good morning. So I apologize for my voice. I'm getting over the flu. But listen, I just want to tell you that, you know, look, I'm an addict. There's nobody that has a bigger heart for those people that suffer. I just had my 38th year of being clean and sober, and I'm really proud of that. So, thank you. But Judge, you're one of the best men I've ever met. You have the highest of ethics and integrity. And I don't believe for a minute that you, I know what's in your heart, that you would ever say anything like that. And the, and all the Commissioners here, Ryan, you know, you've been to our facilities, you've supported us, Kevin, Bobby Mitchell, Diana's my county commissioner. I'm proud of each and every one of you. And all of you have served with ethics and integrity. There's a tremendous amount of not-for-profits in Denton. And, you know, we're all struggling for money because donations are down, money's tightened up, all right? And I get it. And at the end of the day, it's not the county's responsibility if my organization fails. And I appreciate everything that happens, right? But we're also concerned about the opioid money because our young men are all addicts. And so we want to see that that money is fairly dispersed. And we certainly hope that Solutions finds and raises the money because we support the work they do. But I want to stand here today in front of all of you to thank you for your service, right? And to let you know how much we appreciate the things that you do. And my words come from the heart. Because everybody on this court has always treated me with kindness and with fairness and supported my organization. And all of you have attended every event that we've ever done. And so I'm proud to be in Denton County with the first-ever safe house in the country for boys that have been sex trafficked. And we get a lot of news coverage, so we bring a lot of attention to Denton County. So I just want to thank each and every one of you. All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your friendship.
God bless you.
All right. Next is Kathy Mikulik. Did I pronounce that right? Kathy, is she still here? Kathy Mikulik? All right, next is Mr. Jeff White. Mr. White? Jeff White?
It says he doesn't want to speak, Judge.
Why doesn't? Okay, Amber Ruffu? Amber?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. My name's Amber, and I'm a lifelong resident of Denton, city of Denton. I was raised by a nurse that worked at Flow Hospitals Cassidy. I was also born there and raised by a former chief of police of Denton. So my, I say that to say that addiction doesn't care how well you were raised and doesn't care that you have two kids, you know, at home. I found addiction late in life and actually found myself in the system a couple of times and, because I didn't have a solution. And the man who raised me introduced me to Scott. And Scott sat down with me and was like, what do you want? And I'm like, I just want my daughters back, and I want to have, you know, put a roof over their head, support them. And he promised me that if I followed what he did, I could have that. And 10 years later, I'm standing in front of you, and I have all that. My oldest daughter's 20, she's in college. My 18-year-old got an athletic scholarship to go to Oregon State. And if it wasn't for what Scott and Solutions provided, you know, for this community, I wouldn't, my daughters wouldn't have that. And I certainly wouldn't have a purpose. So I sponsor women. I've been doing it for 10 years. I help people, just, I'm a GM at McDonald's. And this program has given me a purpose where I can also help people in that, in that way as well, being understanding and mindful of their life situation and not making it all about the job and, you know, money. I actually, you know, I help lead people in their lives, not just at work. So whatever you could do to help them get, you know, help us stay open, because I'll have to pivot on my purpose if they don't stay open because a lot of the source of my recovery comes from there. So, I mean, I need them even, the community needs them. And then I also, even 10 years later, I need them as well. So whatever you could do, and, you know, if any, I mean, I'm not in the back rooms with you, and I'm not in the back rooms with them, but if there's, you know, the bad blood, I don't like it, so I want to make amends for anything that would, that isn't false that has been said, you know, in this, you know, around this topic. So thank you for your time.
Amber, thank you. Let's give her a hand. Congratulations. And there's our timer. All right, let's go to Amber Climber. Let's go to Amber and Amber. Okay.
Hi, good morning, Judge Eads. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to try not to get emotional. I cannot promise.
You can. You're welcome to.
So I, much like Cassidy, was a frequent flyer. I struggled with addiction for 17 years, and I didn't think that life could ever be any different. I thought that I was going to die in my addiction, or die in prison, or die with the people I was using with. Fast forward, I landed in Denton, not, not in a good situation, but in Judge Burgess' court. And Judge Burgess said, you are on drugs, and I will take your kid away. Please do not make me do it. He sent me to Solutions, and he gave me 24 hours to get there, as a matter of fact. And when Scott came to talk to me, he said, what if I told you you never had to get high or drunk again? And what if I told you you never had to go to jail again? And I was like, you don't know me very well. That being said, my son only knows me sober. I have eight years of sobriety. I have worked for Denton County Friends and the Family. I have worked for law firms. I've worked for insurance agencies. I, today, am an amazing person. I extradited myself from a very violent relationship, did everything to advocate for my son. And I think if I could have you consider anything, it would be that lives change because of services like, like Denton County has. Lots of those nonprofits are funded by grants, as y'all know. I didn't have the money when I got to Solutions. My family was done with me. They wanted nothing to do with me. If I would not have had a scholarship, I am confident I would have died at the hands of my abuser. I would have died by my addiction. I just, death would have been the outcome. So I just implore you to please consider all these things as you're listening to these testimonies, as you see the ripple effect. I know that there is only so much that can be done, but I just implore you to please consider these things.
Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, next is Miranda, is it Salt? I'm trying to, Scott. Miranda Scott, I'm sorry. Miranda Scott. Good morning, Miranda.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here.
Hi. I am a very grateful, recovered drug addict and alcoholic. And I also wanted to repeat that addiction does not discriminate. I'm a president's list, college-educated person. I come from a really nice family, and I ended up homeless with absolutely nothing, feigning for drugs, willing to do absolutely anything to get them. Sorry, I'm really nervous.
You're doing great.
I can promise you, if there was a way that my family could have given me a solution, they would have. But addiction took everything from me, including my family. And Solutions of North Texas is giving people a way out from that. I was going to die alone. Everybody in my life had walked away from me because I was a violent, rageful person. I was extremely abusive in my addiction. And today, I have freedom from that. I don't wake up feigning for drugs or wondering how I'm going to get money or who I have to screw over to get my needs met. I wake up and I get to wake up in prayer and thank God that I'm still alive because I used to wake up mad that I was still alive. And Solutions is helping people, like they said, at low cost because I've been to really nice places that didn't help. But I went to Solutions Broken, and I also was in on a scholarship. And they helped me with what was causing my addiction because the drugs and the alcohol were just a symptom. I was the broken person inside, and I was, the inside of me was what needed help. And they didn't look at me like I was nothing. They looked at me like I had the potential for anything, and I do, and I still do. And without them, I wouldn't have been able to get out of a relationship that I shouldn't have been in and grow in ways that I would have never grown in because they're helping people with more than just their drug and alcohol addiction. It goes so much deeper than that. They're helping families because I'm not just the only one affected by my addiction. My entire family was affected. And they're still affected by it today. My dad used to tell me that whenever my name was brought up in conversation, he was so ashamed of me, he would either ignore it or change the subject. And today, my dad calls me for advice of like what to do at the gym or like stuff. Like, my dad's my best friend today.
Well, congratulations.
And I never thought that I would be able to say that. I hated my dad, you know? But he's one of my closest confidants today. And without people like Solutions, I would never have that. I wouldn't be here, or I would be on the streets. The people you see wandering around, I should be there, you know? But Solutions gave a chance on someone like me.
Good. Thank you, Miranda. Congratulations. All right, next is Rosemary Kehoe. And after Rosemary will be Robert Monford. Go right ahead.
Good morning. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thanks for being here. Just adjust that mic if you need to. Thank you.
I'm a little nervous. I don't speak in public, but this is near and dear to my heart.
It's important.
My name is Rosemary Kehoe, and my sobriety date is March the 7th of 2020. Like so many people here, I have a long family history of drug and alcohol addiction. I was, I went into rehab on March the 7th, right before COVID, and came out on April the 5th to a completely changed world. And the worst thing you can do to an addict is put them in isolation. And then on April the 6th, when I got home, I went straight to Solutions. If it hadn't been for them, I probably would not be standing here right now. They just gave me back so much of my dignity and my integrity. They taught me how to navigate. I am so grateful that they were still having in-person meetings during COVID. But I don't know what to say. I, I am just very grateful to be standing here and speaking to y'all because this is not something that is me. I should be dead. I should not be standing here. I had what I consider a silent addiction. Nobody knew. I kept it to myself. I was a pharmacy technician. I stole my drugs and went home and self-medicated at the end of the day. And there are many, many times that I should not have woken up. I am so grateful to Solutions and to Scott and Leslie for helping us navigate the court system and my bail and, and just being there for us. And we are the prevention. Yes, their prevention programs are great. They're wonderful. But we are the prevention. We are the ones that show the world that it can be done and that we can know a new freedom and a new happiness and live and navigate this world. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, let's go to Robert Monford. Good morning.
Judge, how you doing today?
Good.
Good morning, sir.
Thanks for being here.
So like, I'm also a Denton, I, my kids went to the same first grade that I went to here, was Woodrow Wilson at the time, now it's changed to, you know, well, I can't even think of the name of what it changed to right now. I'm just nervous. This is the first time I've ever stood in front of a judge and didn't have handcuffs on, so.
All right, good.
I'm pretty sure this man right here has watched me through binoculars.
We do have palips.
So with that being said, I am a Solutions graduate.
Good.
Miss Bobby Mitchell here, she said, I'm also a drug court, a family drug court graduate. She said, our invocation, our prayer, minded my wife's graduation, Lauren and me. So just with that being said, you know, being in recovery has turned my life around. I've spent a large portion of my life in like jails, different rehabs and doing stuff like that just because of the path that, you know, bad choices, that addiction took me down. And with that being said, like, I'm not a bad person. What I was, was a sick person. You know, this, this gave me an outlet to, you know, re-channel what I was doing and be a better person. So from that, you know, it just like, I'm a member of different groups, they're anonymous, I can't like say, but select, you know, addiction and alcoholism. The, you know, Solutions provides a place to bring meetings from the outside too, to facilitate there, you know, to, to make aware of the newcomers. So whenever people get out, they can still continue on their recovery journey, you know what I mean? And that way, continue to stay sober. I'm able to work with newcomers that come and talk to people that are struggling. And as the lady said before me, you know, it's attraction rather than promotion. If you look me up, I'm not a savory person on paper, but if you can look at my life now, you know, I'm gainfully employed.
Great.
I have housing, my own vehicle, I pay my taxes. You know, all this stuff comes into play, and that all came from guidance and stuff that I've gotten through recovery at Solutions and, and other nonprofits too. I'm a client of MHMR and other stuff. But like ultimately, you know, there's a better way to live and, you know, just by helping provide resources for that is beneficial, and it helps in my recovery and... is beneficial and it helps in my recovery and, you know, in saving lives. So thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next is Anna Kehoe. After Anna, we're gonna have Pam George.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. You've already heard from my mom. Growing up, her favorite thing to tell me was Psalm 139:14, "I praise you because you are fearfully and wonderfully made."
Yes.
Almost five years ago to the day, I had to watch as my mom was arrested and taken to rehab. When she came back a month later, it was like a stranger walking into the house. It was like I didn't know her anymore. Solutions of North Texas gave me my mom back. I remember often going to pick her up from her meetings at Solutions and just seeing the light return to her eyes every single time she came back. Today, my mom is almost five years clean and our relationship is stronger than ever. Addiction isn't just people shooting themselves up with drugs in back alleys. Addiction, as you've heard, is mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, your neighbors, your friends, sons, daughters. Addiction doesn't discriminate. Mental health does not discriminate. So I please urge you to help fund Solutions of North Texas and to continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next, thank you, Anna. Next is Pam George. And after Pam, we'll have William Potts. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
I brought some things that I wrote down this morning on my phone because I tend to be a little loquacious.
Okay, well, I'll set my alarm here.
So try to stay on task here. Esteemed leaders of our community and community members. I am here today with a heart full of gratitude and a plea born from personal struggle and triumph. For 20 years, Solutions of North Texas has been the only nonprofit or drug and alcohol treatment in Denton County. And it has been nothing short of a lifeline to many, including myself. 13 years ago, I was drowning. I was addicted to prescription pain medications, overwhelmed by the loss of my mother and grieving my dad's Alzheimer's diagnosis. I felt completely alone, consumed by shame and utterly convinced that if there was a God, he didn't want anything to do with me. In my darkest moment, with my life crumbling around me, I reached out to Solutions of North Texas. That single phone call changed everything. I remember the voice on the other end, a voice that listened without judgment, that offered compassion and understanding. That's what we do, hon. You have a substance abuse disorder. Our bodies don't process these substances the way normal people's bodies do. You are not a bad person. You aren't beyond redemption. We can give you the tools to stay sober and we can teach you how to be self-sufficient. Those words spoken with sincere sympathy, empathy ignited a spark that led me toward recovery. I entered the residential program and through hard work and unwavering support, rediscovered a purpose in life and some joy. I built a career in the bridal industry for eight years and became a devoted parent, friend, and gradually transformed into someone I once believed I could never be. For over a decade now, I have had the privilege of giving back to our community through Solutions. First as a volunteer and now as a case manager for nearly three years. Every day I witness miracles. I see mothers reunited with their children who now flourish as loving parents. I see young people who were once homeless, now graduating from college, realizing their dreams. I see everyday citizens transforming their lives and in turn enriching our community. When I look around at the faces in this courtroom today, I see clients, I see friends, I see family. And I also see the power of a helping hand. It is with deep concern that I share my fear today due to a severe lack of funding. There is a real risk that Solutions of North Texas may one day soon be unable to answer the desperate call of someone in need, just like me.
Pam, I'll give you, finish one more sentence and then we'll conclude.
Okay.
One more sentence.
This is a call to action, a chance to prove that our commitment to every citizen is not just words but actions. And I ask you to partner with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good job. William Potts and then Laurie Johnson.
Hi, I'm William Potts.
Good morning.
I have been on drugs since I was 13 years old and nobody could tell me anything. I, I come to Solutions a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, and I'm still plugged in with the program. They have helped me, taught me how to manage my life, direct me and show me things that I've never known. I thought it was okay to do drugs. I thought it was okay to live the way I was living. And today I, I'm, that's my family. They, they still help me. That's all I got.
Well, thank you. Thank you, William. Thank you for being here. All right, Laurie Johnson. And then after Laurie's Alicia Monday. We're over our time with the, let me see here.
Hello, Judge. My name is Laurie Johnson. About the end of July in 2023,
Yes.
I came out of jail
Okay.
and found Solutions. I was, I'm thankful for Solutions. I, I should be dead. I was doing blackouts after drinking and driving. Today I have my son.
Good.
Today I am still with Solutions. And I'm still going to advocate for Solutions and other females, other individuals who have addiction problems. If it was not for Solutions, I would not be here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alicia Monday? Are you with us still, Alicia? Alicia Monday? All right, Nancy Cortez. Nancy, okay, good. Good morning. Glad you could be here.
Thanks for allowing me to talk. Let me get this off.
It's okay.
Something's going around.
There you are.
I'm, I'm Nancy Cortez and I'm also a lifelong Denton person.
Perfect.
Flow Hospital. Anyway, I took dinner to my niece and her newborn son and her husband. And they are, they are graduates of Solutions.
Okay, good.
Sorry, I will not be here for, if we're not having it. Her cousin, my son, Alex Cortez, died of fentanyl poisoning, August 16th, 2023. He had also been in a sober living home in Tyler and had gotten clean. Just come back to Denton, been here two, two years, sorry, two weeks. Also Denton, great student, went through Ryan High and anyway, had gone to college. On cloud nine, just gotten a job at Hoochie's, was living the dream. And he was clean except for cigarettes and which I even bought for him. Somebody said, you buy your son cigarettes? I said, well, you know, cigarettes, drugs, I go cigarettes. I go for that. Anyway, he suffered from anxiety and I think he thought he was buying Xanax. The coroner's report said fentanyl poisoning and only fentanyl poisoning. It was laced, obviously. So I had him for brunch Sunday afternoon with his cousins and he was dead Wednesday.
Wow.
Yeah. And I only bring that up because he had also gone through a program and had gotten clean. But, you know, and he was totally clean. But I say the anxiety, maybe just being back and having a job again for the first time in a while, he just, that happened. But on the good side, I have my niece and her husband and this ten, sorry, one week old baby Aiden. So, and her mother also is a, is a recovering drug addict. She's been clean 25 plus years. So it runs in my family. Anyway, thanks for letting me speak. I did want to say quickly that I do carry Narcan. Someone mentioned that earlier. It's this tiny thing. This would have saved my son's life. It's free from naloxone texas.com. It's part of the opioid money we were talking about. You'll get two free vials. They will give it to you as often as you need it. They just ask you to share if you do save someone's life. I've given it out to countless people in three states.
Perfect.
Anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for what you do. So sorry about your loss. All right, next is Jade McCoy. Moran? Jade, are you with us? Does not want to wish to speak.
We can read.
Robert, Robert McCoy does not wish to speak. We have Ashley Hawkins. Good morning, Ashley. Thank you for being here.
I come from a long line of drug addicts. Half of my family's still out in addiction. I got saved by the grace of God and Solutions showed me the way to life, to live a happy and healthy life. Without Solutions, I would be...
Go right ahead. That was Nancy's timer. Go right ahead. I'm sorry. Feel free to start over.
I would be probably high right now, in the streets, doing the most. But, you know, today I live, you know, as free as I can, you know. I do work with other women. I sponsor other women. I'm nervous too.
It's okay. You're doing great.
I just, you know, they, they supply Solutions also supplies, you know, meetings through, you know, other groups. You know, I go to those groups a lot. They supply like IOP, intensive care therapy, supportive therapy. I went through those programs as well. And I just think of, you know, people that are gonna really lose out on, you know, services there. You know, the next addict needs, needs services. We don't want to see people die in our community and they're going to if we don't keep this place open. And that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. You did a great job.
Congratulations for being clean.
Congratulations. Next is Illabella. Isabella L. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm nervous.
It's okay.
It's nice walking in some courtroom and knowing you're gonna leave. You don't have to wear certain clothes because the holding cells are cold. Solutions is a program you can complete for your sobriety, but it's so much more. You can go sit before someone and ask to rent their home and you tell them that you're from, I look horrible on paper. Nobody in their right mind would rent a home to me. But when you come from a place of integrity and you've graduated from Solutions of North Texas, they will rent you a home. When you've graduated from Solutions of North Texas, you get a job. People, I work at Roots of Neural Ranch. People trust me with adolescent girls. I work for Recovery Place. I've had a job for more than three years. When you need something in the community, when you need someone to fight for your child in custody, Rachel Roland will represent you, knowing that you will pay it. You don't have anything. Recovery goes so much further than the completion of their course. And it's so important to have that support, to talk to addict people in the community legally, homeowners, job opportunities. Because those are the things when you leave a rehab or whatever that, that stumble. Those pits in the road, they are the shock absorbers for those potholes that you hit. You know, you hit them without shocks, they're rough. But you don't have as many obstacles and you have so much more opportunity from people with integrity to look into people's eyes and be like, oh my gosh, they're gonna recognize me or get pulled over for speeding. And you're not gonna get searched. And you, it, it's so much more because the things after a sober house are the things that lead back to relapse. But when you have the support from Solutions in North Texas, job applications, job search programs, hey, I just need to talk to you. Those are the things that keep you going and those are the things that keep you sober. Those are the, that's the support we need. I can't imagine walking into someplace and telling them, oh, I came from Solutions and them not knowing where I came from. Because that's been what I've needed to show that I can be trusted again. I turned a four-year probation into 10 years like that. I'm so grateful that Judge Shanklin gave me an opportunity. I was one of the first drug court people. I turned a 18-month program into almost three years. But having the support from them and Scott and Leslie. Leslie asked me, what if being a mom doesn't look like what you think it should? And I couldn't imagine, this is why I'm getting clean, right, is to get my child back for my freedom. But to get sober for myself, what if being a mom means I'm not gonna see my son again? What if I'm not gonna just be able to supervise visits and be okay with that? So there's so much more to staying sober. There's so much more things we need and Solutions was my rock, my foundation, led me, my children talk to me again. I have four children. I have custody of my 10-year-old, Judge Hartling. I was not in family drug court, so when I stepped into the return and monitor home, I did not have the financial support of the drug court. I had Scott and Leslie saying...
If you'll complete your sentences, it's okay.
There's just so much more to being part of Solutions and I'm so proud to be able to say I come from a place of integrity.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you. Our last speaker today is Ms. Toni Johnson Simpson from Friends of the Family. Good morning. Glad to have you with us.
Toni Johnson Simpson, Denton County Friends of the Family. I just want to say that at Friends of the Family, we've served this community for 45 years. I've been there for 20 years. And that we are in the midst of a greatly growing county. Friends of Family has probably partnered with every single organization that has spoken today and many of the clients and certainly all law enforcement agencies. I want to thank the Commissioners Court for, for your, your wisdom, for your willingness to be able to support our citizens. You've helped us so much to be able to provide for the clients that we serve. Last year we served 5,769 individuals. We answered over 3,300 crisis line calls. We couldn't do that without the support. I think even COVID was the time that we were all the most afraid of. But it was certainly the time when I saw that our Commissioners, you guys came to our aid as a nonprofit community. You helped us to be able to access government funds that we'd never seen before. That you've been there for us. And the greatest thing I will say about this court is really that your accessibility. That we, I have felt that I can pick up the phone and call you or email you and reach out to you and have conversations about difficult topics, about how difficult it is to sit in the position. I certainly, I think as all of us as nonprofit EDs or CEOs, we certainly understand when our organizations are at risk. That those 5,769 people that Denton County Friends of the Family served last year, it's always my fear that I won't be able to serve them again. And so I'm grateful that you're willing to hear that and to sit down with me and to problem solve and to be of support to the citizens of this county. And so as a fourth generation Denton County resident and a flow baby, I say thank you. And I'm grateful. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Toni. I, thank you, Toni. That's it. So I would thank you for all those comments today. That was number, Toni, your 30th speaker this morning. I want, huh? What? I didn't, I don't have another registered speaker.
Oh, one that might have walked out. There was a young lady in the restroom.
Okay, is Alicia Monday here? Okay. 31, number 31. Alicia, thank you. I'm glad we could.
Yeah, Alicia.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, go right ahead. We've got three minutes.
The moment I go to the restroom, everybody's...
That's how life goes. All right.
I really appreciate you letting me speak. So I know you've heard a lot of stories, testimonies from other addicts who have found recovery through Solutions of North Texas. My solution with my... My solution with, my situation with Solutions is a little bit different. I remember David, Scott, Jeff Davis, Fitzgerald. Fitzgerald visited my house many of times, spoke to my mom. My mom actually worked for TW and UNT. She was the administrator for the police department there. So I remember every time that I would come home, she would be like, do you have any warrants out? She would check. She would call. She'd take me straight to jail. She would be like, you're not allowed in my house with warrants, right? And every time I went out, I thought I had the choice. I could just use differently, you know, or I had control of it, and I didn't. And Solutions, you know, my mom was done with me. Everybody was done, and I went also to Solutions with a grant. Without that grant, I would definitely also, in abusive relationships, I know that y'all have heard it time and time again, you know, in abusive relationships, I was desperate. I was hopeless. I was literally going to die in that life, you know, and without Solutions giving me a bed and teaching me how to be an adult, because they taught me how to manage my money. They told me how, you know, how to work the program, how to live on life terms. And I was actually facing a felony charge in Oklahoma and a felony charge here in Texas. I have been through the system multiple times. IOP, probation. I went to prison. I got out on parole, and I had a blue warrant within the first eight months, you know, so I'm a frequent flyer. And with those two charges, I was looking at eight years in prison, and they went with me to court. Scott went with me to court, and he worked harder for me than my own lawyer did. He was setting up the new drug court program, and I was blessed enough after having to show them that I wanted it. I was blessed enough to have the opportunity to be a part of that and one of the first graduates of that drug court program that Denton County has today. I really appreciate all that y'all do, all the funding that y'all have given. I know that y'all have a lot of decisions to make, and I know there's a lot of amazing places that are out here to help the community. Addiction is horrible, and it runs rampant, and people are dying daily. But with this money, y'all have an opportunity to help save lives, and so I ask you, help us stay open. Help these other communities. Help other families because we need it. We're dying daily, and prevention for me, it didn't work. I was of the hopeless variety. I had to be desperate to take the help, and so that's when they stepped in and they were willing to help me. So I really appreciate y'all's time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming back in. I have been in a lot of public meetings in my career, facilitate a lot of meetings, and I hate that I had to cut y'all off because you, but we had to do time constraints as part of our policy so we could proceed with the business. But I want to tell you, I could sit here all day and hear the wonderful testimonies that y'all boldly and bravely and courageously said today in public. In the public record, this video is a permanent record for the county, and you have so much to be proud of. You have so much to be proud of. As I said in my comments, I've attended the drug court graduations and been inspired and blessed because of the success that y'all individually take daily. And you don't do it alone. You do it the love and encouragement of our judges and Solutions and other advocates, members of the communities, your families who may have given up on you in the past, who have to rebuild trust and confidence in your steps. And so I'm so proud of you. I am so deeply proud. Thank y'all for coming over and expressing your heart, your life story. It's the American way to advocate to your local government, right, and your federal government, your state government. That's the American way, and so you're always welcome to do that. It's the way in which we do it is what demonstrates partnership or not. And so, and I think that's important for the leadership of the organization to remember that. And so I want to thank you as individuals and users of the services there. I do want to thank y'all again for petitioning your government. And in a way, there's nothing more patriotic than doing that besides voting or enlisting in one of the services. So thank you for being a part of the solution. I want to, we will be continuing our process in a diligent manner so that we can identify a comprehensive approach. I think when you heard our nonprofits talk today, whether it's food insecurity, housing, you know, medical response, we really try to do lasting change, and I think that's part of what we're called to do as policymakers, is move the needle, not only for today, but for tomorrow and for next year, and change people's lives. And so I think this court has demonstrated, and you have expert witnesses today who have been the beneficiary of that, and the partner. Partnership, we can't do it alone, right? We have to have friends with our cities, our counties, our states, our major donors, the small donors, individual donors. And so I think that is, so having that spirit of partnership is important for any level of success for a nonprofit. I've been on a lot of nonprofit boards, as has everyone that's on this dais, and we understand the spirit of partnership and what is required in partnerships. It's not always fun. Sometimes you have to speak the truth in love, as the Bible says, right? But I want to thank y'all for being here, and what I've spoken to the drug court graduations many times, I'll end on this, and I'll tell y'all this in case I wasn't at your graduation, that we serve a God of second chances. Amen? And third chances and fourth chances, and a lifetime of second chances. That's what my faith teaches me. And so I think that it's important for us all to remember every day as we get up in the morning, as you're taking that next step in sobriety. And so I want to commend y'all for being here publicly and expressing and advocating what you do, and I would love for us to continue this fruitful and productive dialogue. So thank you. Does anyone have any other comments?
I have.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I'm not going to talk too long because I could do a little preaching here this morning, but I just want to thank all of our nonprofits. I've had the opportunity to go read proclamations, Scott. I want to thank you and your group for all that you do for our citizens. I want to thank the graduates. When I read those proclamations and I stand up and give them words that they allow me to hug them or shake their hands.
That's right.
I want you to know that we love you. We're not here to shut down any business, legitimate, that is, hurt anyone. This Commissioners Court cares about our citizens, each and every one of them. I would, that is one of the best things that I get to do in this job.
All right.
When the judge is busy and has to go to RTC or NTA or one of the other groups, I get to go and read the proclamations. I wish I didn't have to go read the proclamation because in a perfect world, we'd all be perfect.
All right.
But we're not. We're perfect in God's eyes, though. May not be perfect in man's eyes. But I get to go and I get to talk to each and every person that's graduating from Solutions of North Texas. And I want to say I just appreciate the job you do. All of you that have gone through something. You know, we all have something in our lives that we have to go through. But you stood here this morning, person after person, and testified to what you have had to go through. I want you to know that I appreciate every one of you. I'm looking forward to going again to drug court, but I wish we didn't have drug court. But when my time, when the judge is busy, I'm going to be ready to go again. And thank you for working as hard as you've done to be productive citizens and daughters and sons and mothers and fathers. When I hear about the mothers getting their children back, it just makes my heart glad. Thank you. I appreciate every one of you, and be blessed.
All right. Commissioner Falconer?
Well, I also just want to echo the comments of the other Commissioners and the judge. I'm the newest on the commission, just been here for a little over two years, but have also dedicated much of my life to public service beyond just here. And so I want to echo all those thanks to everyone. I, too, have been able to go to a drug court several times and have really appreciated what happens through that process. And like Commissioner Mitchell said, we're not in the business of shutting any of those things down. And we wish we had infinite funds. That's not how this world works. But I just want to say that we support all of you, and we're so proud of all of you who have gone through that. I personally don't know how hard that is, but I have family members who have gone through that, so I recognize how hard that is and how difficult. And you're all very much winners for that. And we just want to continue. I've had conversations with Solutions, and we want to continue those conversations with all of our nonprofits because we have to use our nonprofits to accomplish the things that we have to do here. And I just want to thank all of you for coming out and taking your time to speak to us.
Perfect. Did you want to close up?
Real quick, Judge. Yeah, I want to tell everybody how awesome it is to actually hear all your testimonies. You know, I've always been on the other side of that where I see, I'm the one that gets to take you in all your, in your worst time, okay? I see you in your worst time. I don't ever get to see you on your best time because obviously we don't interact again, which is wonderful. But it's exciting to hear and to see how well and what you've done with your life, and that's amazing. And I think that there's none of us up here that don't want to continue those type of operations. And getting clean is one thing. It's staying clean is the next hardest part of it, and you have to continue those relationships, which many of you have had those discussions. So it's not a, you know, we try to prevent, okay, we can only prevent so much. Then when we have the person that becomes an addict, we've got to get them clean, and then we've got to try to help them all the way through the rest of their life, because once an addict, always an addict. All right, it's very easy relapse. I guarantee you, some of you have relapsed and you've been in it again. And so I will tell you from here, I'm going to do everything I can to help each and every one of you in some form or fashion. We do it with every nonprofit in the county, and I think that's exactly what the rest of this court members want as well, and we hope we can do something good for you. I'll tell you one thing I've noticed. There was a couple of you came up here with McDonald's is where you work. You know, if you're supplying them with wonderful employees, I sure would think they may want to be supportive of a local community like yourself for what you do.
I noticed that, too, right.
And I would think that McDonald's should maybe kick in a little bit of donation, and I'm serious. I would give them a call if I was you, sir.
McDonald's, are you watching?
Yeah, exactly.
We love you.
You know, hey, great food, great everything. I don't know about how healthy it is, but it's okay. But at the end of the day, you know, obviously, they have given opportunity for you as employees as well, to employ you, because it is extremely difficult to get employment for yourselves after, because the first thing you do is, well, we do background checks, look at the rap sheet. Oh, my gosh, no way. So they give you an opportunity, so hopefully they would be a little more supportive of your organization as well. So thank you again, Judge. I appreciate it, and thank you for all you, for all coming in today. I'm really proud of each and every one of you.
All right, we are going to take a seven-minute recess. Thank you so much. Thank y'all for being here. Ten forty-five.
Seven minutes.
You know, limited on first responders, so they'll treat as much as we can, but we need, we need you to help yourself so we can help you at this point, you know, so. Severe weather kicks off between March and June, and then we get hurricane season, and then we get another severe weather season, and another season, and another season, but severe weather season actually occurs all year round. Um, fun fact, that's not so fun, is we have received since record keeping the eighteen eighties and up, have received a tornado in each month of the year, so there's, there's no month where we're free from tornadoes, so, um, always be, be di- be diligent and having that multiple ways. So you can always sign up for your local emergency alerts through your local jurisdiction, or you can sign up for Denton County, um, you can visit our webpage dentoncounty.gov, and that information's listed on the front page along with our State of Texas Emergency Assistant Registry, and that's housed by TIDAM. That one is for medically fragile, um, individuals who are electric dependent or dependent on additional services. That registry comes to us and the local jurisdictions to check upon you if there is a prolonged power outage, and we can make that door-to-door visit with local law enforcement to do a welfare check and to make sure that no person is left behind. Um, understanding outdoor warning systems, the county doesn't have that, and, but our local jurisdictions do, so understanding what that means, it's not a tornado siren, they can, they can activate that for any disaster. It's to let people outside know to come inside and seek information, and they can sound that off for seventy mile per hour winds, so you may have heard that this morning from other jurisdictions, because we've received about eighty-two mile winds this morning. We could have large hail over an inch and a half, uh, inch and a quarter or more, going back to Wiley, remember those big hail cores that, you know, came down in twenty sixteen? Uh, two years ago, Sanger hit the record-breaking, um, hail over a disc-size hail, so that's, those are the warnings for, and then other emergencies as needed, so if there's a chemical spill, we can tell people to go inside and seek information. But to talk a little bit, you know, about tornadoes, um, we had our fair share of them last year, actually, twenty twenty-four was the second highest amount of tornadoes we've received in the United States, two thousand and four was the highest, so, uh, we were on pace, we, we had our fair shore to- tornadoes, one being the Valley View Sanger tornado that was forty-six miles long, and it ranged from an EF zero to an EF three, and then we have that Ray Roberts Marina that was a EF zero to an EF one. And we had quite extensive damages there, and, um, and that's just with an EF zero to EF one. It completely destroyed twenty-four mobile homes and homes surrounding that area, it detached the, uh, Sanger Marina, and we ended up providing much-needed services with our local nonprofits and long-term recovery committees, as well as first responders, Commissioner's Court, County Department heads, everyone under the sun, you name it, it's, you know, emergency management's a team sport, and we all come together to help the community. But, you know, to think about call of action, you know, understanding some safety tips, you know, um, always go into most of the interior side of, you know, of the building, stay away from any windows, um, if you have two, two stores or more, two stories or more, always go down to the lowest if you can, and, um, you know, do as much as can, go to the restroom, put helmets on, you know, just most sturdy, sturdy building, part of the building. And then know the difference between these warnings that come along, so tornado, you know, tornado warnings has been issue or severe weather warning, um, think of it as the taco watch, you know? A watch is in effect, you have the perfect ingredients to have a tornado coming in, well, we have a perfect ingredients to make the most awesome tacos, you know, it's Taco Tuesday. Warning is, it's already made, it's down on the ground, and it's coming for you, and we're ready to eat. But one more thing, I just wanna, you know, keep this brief, because I know we've, um, we have a long court, but, um, I just do want to have a call to action. Um, we have a community emergency response team training coming up this Friday, uh, March seventh, and then Saturday, the eighth, and then fourteen, and the fifteenth. Um, not only knowing what to do with a plan, receiving notifications, practice, train on it, so this is a great training opportunity for, um, citizens to come together, know what to do during a disaster, they teach you how to turn off emergency water shut-offs out in the front yard, um, if someone gets trapped with debris, they have cribbing, so, you know, how do you lift structural damages without impact, you know, impacting, um, the structure of the damage and cause more injuries, you know, to get people evacuated? So those are just brief examples, um, you can sign up for the training on our website, it is free, and, um, this is just a great opportunity to learn to put out fires, you name it, as for emergencies, so. Um, Ms. Brenda Gorley heads beers that for us, and we have Lauren Romero helping back in that up, so we have a great folks onto that, um, that program, and then the many volunteers who help support the cause. Uh, one more que- um, call to action I have is, we do have a storm shelter, um, survey out there, we have applied for a grant, we're trying to get more justification so we can solidify getting that, those fundings, uh, we do have this on our social media and our website, um, residents, we please urge you to fill out this survey, if you would like, you know, if you're interested in a safe room rebate program or a sho- storm shelter to your area, and you can get about half off on the, on the shelter, up to three thousand dollars back, uh, please fill that out so we can bring those tax dollars, um, federal ones, to Denton County. And then, um, I would like to thank the court for everything they do, um, emergency management's a team sport, and we couldn't do without you guys, and the National Weather Service, I know they're spread thin right now, they're doing everything they can to help support the community, push out those emergency notifications, to really notify the public before anything happens. Our community volunteers, our storm spotters, our radio club, they go out there and report what they see outside, eyewitness news, to National Weather Service to match the radar to help get that accurate information out there, our state, federal, local partners, um, private utilities, we have great relationships with them to let us know what's going on in the domino effect, and, um, and then, yeah, CERT, MRC, everyone else, and the department heads. But last touch is, again, um, here's our link for steer, Denton County, and make sure you have your seventy-two hour kit, and don't forget to plan for not only your family, your pets, you know, evacuations, um, those who would, you know, special populations, your neighbors, you know, things like that, so, other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Samantha, have you talked with COG about those, uh, shelters, underground shelters? Because I know about three or four years ago, they were, had a grant to get some, I don't know about now.
Yes, they do not, so, um, they used to, they do, have that grant opportunity for us, they actually had a seven thousand people waitlist, and funds ran out, so, we applied for some funding, we applied for another one here pretty soon in next court, to see if we can get some more, more grant opportunities brought our way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, great presentation, as always, we appreciate everything that y'all do, so I'll go ahead and read this court proclamation regarding severe, severe weather awareness week, whereas storms can strike at any time of the year, and the months of March, April, and May have the greatest potential for violent weather events, and whereas severe thunderstorms that bring damaging winds, lightning, hail, flash floods, and tornadoes frequently, frequent the spring for Dent- the Denton County landscape and have often placed lives and property at risk, and whereas the lives and property of all Denton County residents are the court's utmost concern, and whereas as a community, Denton County can proactively work together to ensure the safety of our people and property, and whereas between nineteen fifty-five and twenty twenty-five, there were sixty-five reported tornadoes within Denton County, and whereas under the coordination of the National Weather Service with strong support from federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies, efforts will be made to inform and educate the public on the necessary steps to survive severe weather hazards and potential disasters this spring may bring. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the week of March the third to the seventh, twenty twenty-five, a severe weather awareness week in Denton County, and we call upon all citizens to designate a safe space for family members to meet in case of evacuation, decide how to maintain communication with loved ones, and put together a preparedness kit of important documents and supplies, most important, we call upon all citizens to heed warnings and instructions issued by local, county, and state officials and emergency management personnel. We encourage all residents to remain mindful of the dangers presented by severe storms, stay informed of current weather conditions, and take precautions to, to prevent loss of life and property done in open court. This is the fourth day of March twenty twenty-five, on a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you so much.
Excellent job, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next is item fourteen A, approval of the order with respect to the Waste Management Incorporated project, which authorizes the county judge to execute certificates approving the order in public hearing and any appropriate action. We have a motion for, motion by Commissioner Williams?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, thank you guys for being here. All right, next Pam Gutierrez, you're up next. So, and Judge Jan, so this is Denton County, MHMR Crisis Residential Unit, a CRU, update it, any appropriate action? Good morning Pam, thanks for being here.
Good morning, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your comments this morning about our relationship.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us, um, I have several people with me, and, um, Judge Jan will make some comments after me, and then I have Mr. Paul Barrow with me, and his son has received services from us, and he has some things he would like to say as well, um, and also have Michelle Conrad with me, our CFO, so I really wanted to say thank you to you all for your contribution to the Crisis Residential Unit, um, your one-time funding of six hundred dol- six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand dollars has exponentially helped, and, um, I really wanted to show you our appreciation and let you know how much it means to us. We have averaged five individuals, um, a month being served, a week, excuse me, being served, the Crisis Residential Unit, and, um, we've had, you know, i- it's difficult because we've had flu pass-through there, we've had individuals, staff, and some of the individuals that have come through have had to go to the hospital, and so, you know, but to keep the average up, I think it really shows the commitment.
Yeah.
Um, we have struggled with getting the grants, as you've heard earlier, um, but that doesn't mean we don't continue to try, and I just want to let this court know how much it means to the citizens and to us, especially, um, your commitment.
Would you like to, can, can one of y'all explain for those who are watching today, what is a crisis residential unit? I think that'd be important.
Absolutely.
Industry term that we're all very familiar with, but I think we have people watching, and I think that would be good for us to explain that a little bit.
Thank you for that opportunity, Judge, so the Crisis Residential Unit is actually in Crum, Texas, it's on, um, ten acres, it is a home that provides recovery for individuals, we provide classes throughout the day, um, and that might, that's, you know, different for each individual, so someone might need help with, um, getting a GED, someone might need help with housing, that is a request, I will tell you, that most, every individual that comes into our services needs, individuals might need SUD, um, substance use treatment, we connect them with substance use treatment, um, majority of individuals that come in need mental health treatment, and possibly they're not linked, so then we link them with our mental health treatment, and then with the groups, individuals learn skills, so sometimes, you know, you think someone coming out of jail, because we get a lot of referrals from the jail, they don't have basic skills, and we help them to regain those skills, and it, obviously it varies depending on what the individual needs, but it's programming throughout the day, fresh meals are made three times a day, um, the individuals wash their own clothes, they share rooms, we serve males, females, and transgendered individuals in our homes, in the home, um, and it is a beautiful home in Crum, in Crum, Texas.
Okay.
Uh, just real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I know it was six hundred, but I thought we approved a million. We approved a million.
So a four hundred, you approved four hundred for substance use?
Yes, ma'am.
And six hundred for the crisis residential, yes, sir?
I just wanted to make sure I was like.
Yes, sir, no, it, it wasn't total a million, yes, sir?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
And I've been there, by the way, and it's a great place.
Thank you, it's a beautiful home.
Yeah, it is.
And the treatment is more beautiful, I've told, um, stories before of individuals, um, that have used this treatment, I told of one individual, and I'm gonna tell it again, he came from Dallas, he had been in a gang, and the Crisis Residential Unit literally saved his life. Mr. Barrow's gonna speak in a few minutes, and he's gonna talk about the unit as well from his perspective, but there are countless stories, um, and, you know, I think it relates to solutions, you heard these stories, solutions obviously has helped numerous individuals, and we are needed, solutions is needed, there's so many nonprofits that are needed in our county, we equally all need the help, and I'm here today to say thank you, thank you for helping the people that need it the most, our vulnerable citizens.
Very good, thank you.
I had prepared an eighty-two slide PowerPoint presentation for this morning, but due to time constraints, we'll detail that.
I'll let you cut it to half.
Yeah, did you lose it?
When we came to you all in September about the Crisis Residential Unit, uh, it was kind of a very quick and rapid request, for those that, that don't know me who are watching, I'm Judge Jan from the Denton County Probate Court, number one, I do, my court's jurisdiction includes involuntary civil mental health commitments, we do, uh, inpatient commitments, outpatient commitments, we have a very fledgling assisted outpatient treatment program, which we had our kickoff for that two weeks ago, I believe, so I have a statutory relationship with our local mental health authority, which is Denton County MHMR, and when we came to you in September, I believe of last year, and asked you to provide funding for the Crisis Residential Unit, uh, Commissioner Mitchell, you asked me, Judge, what will you do to ensure that we're properly utilizing, uh, this facility, and Commissioner Williams, you indicated you wanted us to have some form of steering committee to ensure that we were moving in a direction to properly utilize the taxpayers' dollars, so our request to be on the agenda today was to come back and provide feedback to you all, and an opportunity for you to ask questions, as opposed to just coming in on the three-minute, uh, speaking cycle to come in and tell you it's great and leave. So on behalf of my court, and, uh, what we do with mental health, I would like to thank you for the opportunity last year to continue utilizing the Crisis Residential Unit, we have had an increase in patients stepping out of the jail into the Crisis Residential Unit, and then being able to successfully transition through to those services, it is a fourteen-day program, I believe.
Correct, that's correct.
Uh, from my court, we've been able to assist the hospitals in coordinating patients stepping down from inpatient treatment into the Crisis Residential Unit, with our outpatient court efforts, we've been able to catch people before they descend back into inpatient crisis, and use the Crisis Residential Unit as a reaffirming care for them, to get them, that comfort level back up to either return home or return out into the community. I try to keep Commissioner Williams updated when I remember to, at least monthly, on, on what our bed utilization is, uh, been running fairly consistent at five, uh, occupied, many weeks we've been up at max capacity as well, and we do keep an eye on that, our steering committee meets monthly with a fairly diverse group of us, I want to say there's about ten of us on that call, to include, uh, Judge Ramsey with the jail mental health, our, uh, crisis diversion coordinator, which is a position, I believe we're in the last year of our grant with that, through criminal court number four, but I wanted to let you know that from the court's perspective, we have been fairly successful with this program, and as our assisted outpatient treatment program moves into its full functioning, we expect to be able to run a little bit closer to, uh, max capacity, but from the court's perspective, we've been very successful in our partnership with MHMR, with the crew, and we very much appreciate that, and with that, I'm gonna step out before Mr. Barrow speaks, because I'm two hours late on my docket this morning.
Pleased to go.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate it.
With that, if you have any questions for you real quick, I can take them, but we wanted to-
Any questions for Judge Jan before he leaves?
It sounds like it's, uh, doing exactly what we all wanted to do, and it's successful, so I really appreciate everybody's, uh, efforts.
That's great. With that, thank you all again, and hopefully I won't see you again until September.
Thank you, Judge.
Sorry for the delay. All right, yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, uh, commissioners, for allowing me to speak, uh, thank you to Pam and MHMR and Judge Jan, my name is Paul Barrows, I'm a retired federal agent of twenty-eight years, and I'm here today to tell you the story of my thirty-one-year-old son, who's been battling schizoaffective disorder since he was eighteen, he also has a co-occurring disorder of anosognosia, which is damage to the frontal low part of the brain, and it doesn't allow him to even accept that he's sick, so his treatment is, is very difficult. This leads to medication management issues and psychosis, uh, in addition, I'm here to be, uh, a voice for the voiceless and stand for those that can't stand for themselves. Cody graduated from Marcus High School, where he earned himself a scholarship to attend Austin College and play soccer there, but in his first semester, his disease hit, and he, uh, had to withdraw, he was, um, has been arrested over fifteen times for misdemeanors, he has cycled through twenty-two stays at hospitals over the last thirteen years. It's a public health crisis that now has become the public safety crisis, uh, his last arrest was actually in August of twenty twenty-two, and it was for a felony. He waited in jail for almost two years before he was given a forensic bed, he went to get his, uh, competency restored, came back six months later, uh, the DA and the court decided to reduce the charge to a misdemeanor and release him to the street. In my estimation, more collaboration was needed, and, um, an involuntary civil commitment would have served him well in a state, you know, a state mental hospital, right, long-term. So, he was released, this coincided, uh, on February sixth, when I was giving testimony up in Austin to HHSC, and I contacted MHMR, who activated their Crisis Residential Unit program, and met Cody as he was being released, and Cody accepted their offer for services. If not for Crew, he would have been on the streets in Denton, uh, walking around homeless and scared, I'm sure, um. At Crew, he was given housing, uh, a physical, a psychological assessment, medication management, future doctor appointments, and therapy, which was, you know, badly needed, so I'm here to say thank you for the money that has been granted, and I urge you to continue to fund and increase funding for Crew for people like Cody and those on the streets that really need, uh, Crew. One more note, um, after Cody left Crew, he went to a group home in Ponder, uh, after the second day, he eloped, he said, Dad, that, that place is for people who are sick, they're, they have a disease, I, I don't have a disease, that's the anosognosia, that's the part that doesn't allow him to accept, right, so, again, treatment is very difficult. He was encountered, uh, by the Ponder PD, who felt on their estimation that, uh, no further action was needed, and they let him walk on, um, he walked, he walks ten, eleven, twelve miles a night, um, what I think that was needed desperately was an extended observation unit at MHMR to where the officers could have taken him, brought him and not had to sit on him, it could get back on the street doing what they, what they do, and what they're charged to do, um, that wasn't available, but I do think that it's desperately needed, and I would urge you to, to consider that, um, it's a forty-eight-hour hold, and I believe that in the end Cody would have been better served, um, just to give you an update as of today, he's on the street, he was encountered by crossroad PD, he referred to me as Gregory, it's my middle name, and I know when he calls someone, when he tells them to call Gregory, he's in psychosis, they didn't feel he was in such a psychosis, I guess that they wanted to, um, give an emergency detention order, um, so, as, as I stand here today, I'm not sure where he is, um, they are out looking for him, MHMR, and the case manager, um, is looking for him, um, we've contacted Denton, you know, PD and looked at the jail report, and he's not on that, so, he's out there somewhere, but thank you for the time, uh, thank you for letting me, uh, explain firsthand in a personal story of, of really what's needed, and again, I thank you for, um, the, the money that you have given.
Well, I, as a parent, as a fellow parent, my heart breaks for you when you're trying everything you can, I'm glad that we were providing some resources that could be of assistance, um, Pam, I do want to thank you for keeping us up to date with the, the me- the me- the meeting minutes and the notes of the, the great work you're doing as far as your committee work, thank you for that, thank y'all for being here today, um, members, are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, you know, yeah, it's a horrible story, you know, heartbreaking, and, and obviously you do, standalone, there's a lot of parents that grow up through the same thing, um, and unfortunately, you know, that happens too much in law enforcement, and it's not real, nothing against the law enforcement officers, you know, you're talking about a ponder, it's a small city, they don't have the resources, they don't have the time, you know, to, to, I'll use your acronym, sit on someone, uh, and I dealt with that way back when I started with small cities, that it's just very difficult, and it's, what do you do, you know, you, so you kick them on down the road, because that's the unfortunate option that you have, and I would say that this county has been working diligently behind closed doors to try to come up with other solutions, uh, not only working with our, our partners like MHMR, but others, but to try to come up with some other solutions for, for the mental illness that we have, and the drug and, and alcohol, um, addiction that we have in our county, it, it's not just our county, obviously, but we can only be responsible, we can only try to help the ones within our county, and, and trying to give those, uh, those officers a, a faster, quicker way to handle things, I mean, it just, it's just like DWIs, you know, you got your guys that love to do DWIs, but, and there's the guys that don't, because it takes so long, uh, you know, and, and those are the things that our legislation needs to come together and figure out how to take care of these things, make quicker roads for us to help people out, so, um, again, I, I, I feel for you and your, your family, uh, and I, hopefully we can, we can find your son and get him back the help he needs, and, and thank you to MHMR for, for bringing him here today and letting us hear this, uh, you know, horrible story, quite frankly, but, uh, we are here to try to do everything we can to make it where your son and every other, uh, you know, person out there in Denton County's got, gets the help they need, so, thank you, Judge.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank y'all for being here, spending the morning with us. Okay, let's go to item two A, item two, which is our consent agenda, members, are there any items on our consent agenda to pull, or do a motion to approve as presented?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approve the order-making appointments and any appropriate action, and item two P is approve the budget memory request, one zero zero six six zero, for the fire marshal transfer one thousand seven hundred five dollars from capital equipment to vehicle equipment to cover the cost of equipment for a new vehicle. Let's proceed to item five A, our auditor and treasurer approve of the bill report payments from CSCD, Community Corrections TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forevoir VIT, VIT interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Good morning.
There are no changes this week, recommend to approve as presented.
Perfect, do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you for the great work the auditor's office does, let's go to item six A, approve of the renewal of Illumio Software and Services from Free Yet Data Solutions, amount of two hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents, to the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR CPO five three three zero.
Okay, first.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, next is item three B, I mean, uh, six B, approve of the renewal of RFP two 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 seven two six, janitorial services to CTJ Maintenance Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, next is six C, approve of the contract with G2 General Contractors for the sanding and repainting of the doors and windows of the Charlie J. Co. Building, amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-three cents, through the Texas Inter Local Purchasing System, TIPS Cooperative Contract two four one zero zero one, any appropriate action?
Okay, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, next item sixty, approve of the contract with G2 Contractors for the continued renovation of shower floors at the Charlie J. Co. Building, amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-four cents, through the Texas Inter Local Purchasing System, TIPS Cooperative Contract two four one zero zero one.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, next is item six E, approve of the addition of one- of the addition of one vehicle to the Department of Technology Services, the DTS current fleet, as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7A, a report from miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. And then, next is item 7B, is a report of budget memory request 100670 for emergency management to transfer $37,648 from maintenance management to capital equipment to cover the purchase and installation of four Motorola APX 8500 radios.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 8A, a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one demotion in the district attorney's office, one promotion in the district clerk, one new hire in JP number five, one rehire in Justice of the Peace number five, one new hire in UNL probation, two new hires in the sheriff's office, one of them is a detention officer one, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Next is item 10A, approve of preliminary plat of Clear Creek Meadows. This is lots 1 through 44, block 1, and HOA lot number 45X, block 1. This is 54.20 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 13A, approve of the appointment of the Honorable Laurie Ragland, County Criminal Court Number One, as the county courts representative on the Denton County Bail Bond Board, replacing Honorable Cody Waddell, County Criminal Court Number Five, effective March the 4, 2025. Chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 13B, approval of designating Ms. Tracy Glover as the Chairman of the Denton County Civil Service Commission for a two-year term, effective January 17, 2025. Chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item 14B, approve of the joint resolution between Denton County and the Town of Dish, establishing an inter-jurisdictional emergency management program to clear, to establish clear protocols, roles and responsibilities for emergency assistance and resources shared during disaster response and recovery efforts.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item 14C, approval of the one purchase of a drainage easement and utility easement by Denton County, Texas from Carroll A. Cadell, in amount of $7,720 plus closing costs for the acquisition of a .321 acre. This is 13,994 square feet, tract of land situated in the George Hallmark Survey, abstract number 516, Denton County, Texas. And two, approval of the purchase of a drainage easement by Denton County, Texas from the Carroll, from Carroll A. Cadell, in the amount of $1,030 plus closing costs for the acquisition of a 0.102 acre tract of land. This is 4,456 square feet, tract of landlet situated in the George Hallmark Survey, abstract number 516, Denton County, Texas. And three, with both tracts to be acquired for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose, with funding to come from the Jackson Road Precinct 4, auto line number 8974219050.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14D, approve of the one purchase of a drainage easement and utility easement by Denton County, Texas from LGI Homes Texas LLC, in amount of $14,500 plus closing costs for the acquisition of a 0.51 acre. This is 23,113 square feet, tract of land situated in William Mathew Survey, abstract number 891, Denton County, Texas. And two, approval of the purchase of a drainage easement by Denton County, Texas and LGH Homes Texas LLC, in amount of $10,650 plus closing costs for the acquisition of a 0.439 acre tract of land. This is 19,125, 19,125 square feet tract of land situated in Richard Jewell Survey, abstract number 660, Denton County, Texas. And three, with both tracts to be acquired for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose, which with funding to come from the Jackson Road Precinct 4, auto line number 8974219050. Any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approve of the purchase of a drainage easement and utility easement by Denton County, Texas from the Atha Kim Thompson, in the amount of $2,110 plus closing costs for the acquisition of a 0.091 acre. This is 3,170 square feet, tract of land situated in the George Hallmark Survey, abstract number 516, Denton County, Texas, for the Jackson Road Improvement Project, which serves a public purpose, with funding to come from the Jackson Road Precinct 4, auto line number 8974219050. And any appropriate action?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's quickly go through item 17, community updates.
Congratulations to Ryan High School Lady Raiders for winning the first girls' basketball state championship in Denton ISD history. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
They competed in the 5A Division 1 and they won 58 to 47 against the number one-ranked San Antonio Wagner. That's pretty, that's pretty cool, isn't it?
Yep.
So, uh, what's that Judge?
I love it.
Oh yeah. No, I do too. And the last thing is, I would also like to congratulate Coach Jeff Sherman of the Marcus High School basketball team for achieving 300 wins this past weekend. We want to continue wishing him success. That's all Judge.
That's cool.
Commissioner Falconer?
Thank you Judge. So first of all, I want to say, we mentioned, we mentioned it with the emergency management, but down in my neck of the woods in South Precinct 2, lots of, lots of, I think, damage from that hurricane force winds that came through, I think across most of the county. But we had a couple of 18-wheelers that actually flipped while, from that wind blocking stuff. There's a lot of electrical.
Hopefully they didn't have eggs in them.
I hope not. And anyway, lots of, lots of trees again. So the trees are taking, taking it hard lately. But we appreciate everything that's happening on the emergency management side. There's several things happening. The Colony has legal aid of Northwest Texas on March 7th from 10 to 2 at the library. Little Elm has their spring fling on the 9th from noon to 5, and that's on the lawn. Fresco has Saturday Yay, which I think is on Saturdays, from, on the 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th from 10 to 2 at Clyde Scope Park. And then Carrollton has Seekonk on the 7th from 5 to 8 at the Josie Ranch Library. It's, to talk about lots of different superhero comics, those kind of things. Lots of stuff to have going on that day. Sounds on the Square and Historic Downtown, that'll be on the 7th from 5 to 7. And then a session at the library at Josie Ranch on the 10th on opening a business in Carrollton. That'll be from 6 to 7:30. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
I have calls, calls and coffee at Flowerman Senior Center on March 12th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The Lake City's Chamber Luncheon on the 12th, 11:30 to 1:00 PM at Global Spirits Center. Holland Village is having a teen bun farback, bun fire bash, March 7th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Copper's Branch Park. Lewisville is still having free income tax preparation at the library, if you'd like to go and get your income tax done, 9:30 to 1:00. In, on March the 7th, a chance to dance. St. Patrick's Celebration, also at Thrive in Lewisville. Acoustic jam at the Lewisville Grand Theater on March 7th, 6 to 9. And River Care cleanup, March 8th at Leila in Lewisville from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on March 8th. That's all I have.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. And as Samantha was mentioning this morning, though, with our severe weather awareness this week, I'd like to remind everybody to be sure they have a way to receive weather alerts. And Denton County has a great emergency notification system available for people to sign up on the front page of our county website, dentoncounty.gov. Super easy and fast. You can, you can register. In fact, this morning was our first major spring storm of the season. I'd like to thank our Office of Emergency Management for all they do. They've been very busy already through the night to monitor our weather conditions and keep us informed, responding to the need arrives. And also a big shout out to our Denton County Fire Marshal's Office for all they do throughout the year to prepare for high-risk fire weather. When it's dry and windy, today we're supposed to almost be record winds, like 47, 50 mile an hour wind. And I can look out, the flag is standing straight out. This afternoon, in fact, has been a high potential for wildfires. Anyway, so I want to keep everybody be, very weather aware. All right. It, I got a couple of executive session items we're going to read. It's going to be very quick. It's going to be 15A, Texas Government Code 551072, deliberation regarding real property, closed meetings, deliberate purchase, exchange lease or value of real property, deliberation, opening would have a detrimental effect on position of a governmental body, negotiations with a third person. 15B, Texas Government Code 5510711A, consultation with attorney, closed meeting when a governmental body seeks the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation regarding El Melacon. And any appropriate action? And it is 11:36 and we're in executive session.